Okay.
Hey, good evening and welcome to everyone joining us here on such a beautiful day. I want to go over some questions from the governor's office. In response to the COVID-19 outbreak and the open public meeting act allows in-person meetings to occur but are limited to 25% capacity, in the evening room, those who cannot attend in person this evening are joining at the Zoom webinar. So welcome to everyone that is either here with us or on Zoom. I'm going to call the board for order. Director Jing Donald, Director Ralph Perkins, Director Julie Bogan-Hagra. Here. Director Rachel Rogers will be absent tonight. Deputy Lieutenant Mike Marino. And Minister of the Assistant Florist Will. Here. I would like to take a motion to excuse Director Rogers' right to me.
I am.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you post? Okay, yes, they have. There's probably a little stick at home. But the good news is they got edited because. Okay. At this time, I'd like to direct. You to Director Bogan-Hagra, who will read the land acknowledgement statement.
Thank you. Governor Ray Allen's school for Riley on the political lands of people on the outside. They had a little party for this one. They make. To open a safe. Families and staff.
Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's where the board of directors meeting. They will be absent on Friday night. And we're about to make the. On David, I am in the post. Okay, adopted. Now we have the pleasure of having a community presentation from Mercy. It's called Family Health. We're very excited about that.
I believe that that's Alyssa.
Oh, okay, and Alyssa's trying to ask.
Yes, that's right, I'm, I have joined. Are you able to hear me?
Okay, yeah, I see. I thought you said.
I don't have my computer or picture over there, so I'm trying on this.
Yeah, she should be. She's a panost and she has the ability. Yeah, she's, she should be good, she's not muted or anything.
Yeah, no, I can, I can sort of hear you, are you able to hear me?
I'm unmuting myself, Alyssa, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Okay, I'll turn my volume up if that helps.
Yes, I, I can hear you. Are, are you able to hear me?
Yes, and we're good.
All right. The vagaries of, yep, public meetings done digitally, it is so much fun. Would you like me to proceed?
Actually, Alyssa, would you hold on one moment?
Sure.
If you guys have your Zoom speakers on, we are getting a little bit of feedback. Mute yourselves, please. Julie, you are not muted. No. I don't know if you're the one, though.
Julie's arguing a lot.
Okay, now you may proceed, Alyssa, sorry about that.
Not a worry, thank you, and, and thank you to members of the school board. Members of the administration and members of the public who may be joining. We really appreciate the opportunity to. Present our project to you, our, our development. Share with, with you what we're planning and also. Consider this an open invitation to partner with the school district in terms of achieving what we believe are going to be many common goals. My name is Alyssa Luber, I'm a senior project developer with Mercy Housing Northwest. While we are based in Seattle, we do have affordable housing developments throughout the state of Washington. In total, we own nearly 50 developments throughout the state, including some in southwest Washington, and we're currently in the process of developing early stages of, of a project just across the Columbia in eastern Portland. So we have been in existence for almost 30 years and really pride ourselves in providing excellent, permanent, affordable housing for both families as well as seniors. What I want to share with you today, just briefly, is the work we've been doing and our plans for a development that is very close to the Peace Health Southwest Medical Center. We have been allied with Peace Health because we have, share some common roots with the women's religious organizations that are founders of the Peace Health Hospital. And we've partnered with them on a, a development up in Bellingham where they've helped us with our. Resident services in a, a really beautiful new senior housing development. Out of that work over the last three years has grown this partnership that has culminated in Peace Health donating both land and capital for the development of a 69-unit prop property that'll be located just east of the Southwest Medical Center on residential lots that have been aggregated. Our plan is to develop these 69 affordable homes for working families. Two-thirds of the, of the units will include two and three bedrooms. What we have discovered in our ongoing market research and management is that there's really a dearth of affordable housing for families. The market really isn't responding with a lot of two and three bedroom units and certainly not at rents that families who are earning, you know, 50, 60% of median, of the area median income can support. We're going to develop this property so that it really is a transition between the single-family homes that are located north and east of the, of the site and the commercial developments and the hospital that are located to the south and to the west. So these are going to be garden-style apartments, three-bedroom or three stories. The property is going to be divided into five separate buildings, so it'll have a very residential feel. One of the hallmarks of what we are developing is that in every new development, we have what we'll call our community or resident services room. And in this room, Mercy will provide a suite of services to the residents designed to backstop them in the areas of health and wellness. Education, success in school and financial stability and housing stability. And how we do that is we have a full-time staff member who coordinates with the community, with the residents to determine where there may be deficits, where they may be looking for or needing support. And we look to establish those partnerships in the community with existing agencies and organizations. And I will say, one of the things that we are, I think rightfully proud of is the work we do with the school districts in the areas where we work. We're very conscious of the need to collaborate together with the families and with the school district to provide, to, to provide support to the students so that they can be successful in what they're looking to accomplish. So the timing on this development is that we will be, expect to receive our construction permits in May. We anticipate closing on the construction financing and beginning construction in June, July, and the development will be finished the following late summer in August of 2022. We anticipate that there'll be about 200 residents living in the community. And based on our experience with. Other similarly configured properties, we anticipate there'll be about 50 school-aged children, ages six to 18, who might live there. So we're pretty excited about this development. We've received support, financial support from the city of Vancouver, from Clark County, from the state of Washington, as well as the Washington State Housing Finance Commission. And then we also, of course, have the support of Peace Health, and we expect they'll continue to grow the partnership that we have developed with them in the terms of the resident services, in terms of employment opportunities. It, it, it's going to be a very exciting partnership with them. I think I've provided quite a bit of information, I guess I would open it up to questions. And then, yeah, a conversation about, you know, how, how we can possibly work together in the future to, yeah, ensure the financial success of the children who are going to live here.
Everyone in the audience, if there's any questions?
I generally, uh, taking their perfect evening tonight. And I guess my question is about. The 35% of area median income, so for the money based on what their income is. Well, yes, that's.
I'm, I'm having trouble hearing the question.
Can you hear me? Yes. Can you? Alyssa, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I, I'm going to go off camera only because I'm going to get a little closer to, to be sure I can hear. Go ahead, please.
So my question was about. The 35% median income, so is this like, you know, rent rate? Or is it basically sold on the income?
I wonder if anyone else is getting the reverb on the. We are, we're trying to figure it out. Okay.
If I am mute, then. She can't hear us. For some reason. If I had.
I'm, I'm, I'm not able to quite hear the, the question.
Question, how rest? Can you hear me?
I somewhat, yes.
How, well. So that, I guess, that possible operator, that's what I. What's the financial burden of that is of the US?
If I understand the question, what's the financial burden on the families who live there? Okay. The, the residents who, the families who live there, they, they will be paying no more than 30% of their income in the, as rent. And the rents will be, the, the, there will be units set aside for families who are very low income, which is earning 30% of the median and area median income, and families who are earning 50% of median income. For, for perspective, we anticipate that there'll be about a 150 to $250 difference between rents that we're charging for similar units and what the market would charge.
I guess from the map, the units are coming into the Ellsworth Elementary boundaries, starting with the new school next year. Does that look right, Fifth Street, north or south of?
It's next to the, Scott would probably know better, it's next to the Peace Health, basically, just to the east of Peace Health.
Right, and so those are just inside the Ellsworth boundaries that we approved for the new school next fall, right? Right? Okay. On. That and the, that and the comment, if you can hear it, Alyssa, that it's exciting to see this kind of thing come to us. And supportive of the families of the communities that we have, thank you for, thank you for sharing this with us.
Well, well, we're pleased, what I would anticipate is that we would, we're going to be very busy with construction for the next, you know, year, but I would say, starting next spring, I would expect that we would reach out to the school district. From our resident services team and provide an introduction and then just share with, with, with you all. And look for ways that we could be supportive of what you're trying to, what you're working to accomplish, backstopping it with the resources that we can provide at our, at our, at our new development. Are there other questions?
Oh, yeah. Here. Is your microphone?
Sorry. Alyssa, this is Victoria, sorry, I. Got my mic off. Um. I am excited about this, and I think this is a highly needed project in our community. And as you make your connections with the school district, I'll be really happy to have you connect with our community and family resource centers in our schools. I think the two of you will have, the synergy between the two agencies will be really exciting to see what we can do, so this is, welcome to the neighborhood.
Well, Victoria, thank you very much, and you just, it's, I just, yeah, exactly the kind of connection that we're looking to make. We, we, yeah, are very supportive of the schools with our out-of-school time, with our tutoring, with our connections directly with the school in terms of program extension, so this is, this is great. I look forward to circling back and starting what we look forward to being a very durable and, yeah, productive partnership, so thank you.
Yeah, Lisa, this is Mike Merlin, I'm the superintendent, and when you are in town, just make sure you contact my office and we'll, we'll put you in contact with whoever we need to set up within the district to get, get the connection started right from the beginning.
That's great, thank you very much, Mike, we do appreciate it, and, yeah, we're, we're excited.
Thank you so much, Lisa, for being with us tonight, sorry about the technical difficulties, but we'll all be together again soon. We'll see you in real life.
We're still trying to learn.
Very good. That, thank you so much, appreciate the time and the opportunity.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Hey, that sounds exciting. We have some special recognition tonight, it's National Library Week. And I think Director Perkins will be reading the National Library Week proclamation for us.
Yes, I will, this is a good one. Okay. Evergreen School District Proclamation, National Library Week 2021. April 4th through 10th. 2021, whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of our cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of the building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and wifi, even checking out internet hotspots and laptops. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. Whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Evergreen School District Board of Directors and the Evergreen School District Administration proclaim National Library Week, April 4th through 10th, 2021. Because of you, libraries transform lives and communities. Signed, the President of the Board of Directors.
And I think that we have Ilahi Teacher Librarian Anna Steppen here to receive the proclamation. My understanding? No, didn't make it? Okay, well, I guess what I would, what's that? Yeah, Bill, we got, we got Bill Bevel as the EBA president. Representing the teacher librarians. I guess what I would just say is, I mean, our, our district, I think, has, has done a tremendous job of, of supporting the teacher librarian. And, and I know for a fact that they work extremely hard every day throughout our district. I think one of the things that we, this year, were fortunate to be able to do was, you talk a lot about the diversity and access to books, we did have the Equity Initiative in terms of adding to the library catalog in all of our buildings so that the materials that we have reflect our student population more, I know that that was really well received, but it's a group of, it's a group of folks that work extremely hard. They've been at the forefront of some of the workaround set as well, so really appreciate the work that they are doing here, and Bill's thankfully here to. Come on up and get the proclamation or maybe get a picture today, I don't know, have you been taking pictures anymore? Do we take pictures anymore with masks on?
You gotta sign it.
Oh, I'm happy to sign it.
And I don't, Bill, want to say anything about teacher librarians, if you have any? Yeah, this, I think this is the one.
I'll, I'll join the board in recognizing our teacher librarians. Very often, they're the ones that kind of just made it work. Many times in different buildings, there were things that couldn't be solved, and many times it was that space in the library that made it possible for us to spread kids out and keep them safe. And oftentimes, to the teacher librarian's ability to be able to do their jobs and be prepared, and so they had to make room and, and roll with the punches on a lot of this stuff. And so the fact that they were able to get books in kids' hands and get tech out in kids' hands and give the support structure, I, I think that, you know, we have, we have the absolute world-class best. And the fact that they're able to, to continue through this, you know, crazy world that we're in and keep kids reading and keep, keep kids interested in literacy. Just shows their professionalism, their ability to do the job. So thank you on their behalf.
Thanks, Bill.
You know, I, just thinking back on when I was a kid and, and the library was one of my very favorite places, whether it be the one at the school or the one in the community. I can remember riding my bike, my little stingray with the basket on the front and loading it up with books and bringing them home and speaking with the flashlight underneath the blanket so I could read them in the, in the night. And it was, I was so happy to see it, it kind of filtered down to my own kids, and now it's filtering down to my little grandson. And libraries can provide such an expansive world to our kids, but it can also kind of create that cozy, safe place, too, it's, it's an interesting dynamic in libraries, so. Appreciate our teacher librarians a lot.
Anybody else?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Oh, yeah, speaking from growing up in this system right here. Marion Elementary School, no good time to sign it. With that place, which has now been reduced to rubble and is being replaced by a better facility, was a sanctuary, the library in the middle of the school, really the heart and center of it all. And that, that sense of sanctuary was carried right through to the middle school, junior high at the time. And in the hospital, it was a place I could go to learn on my own, and it, and I knew the people there would be supportive, and they always were. And then my kids, as they grew up through the system, found the same thing, coming up through Harmony, BBC, and which, and the Pacific Middle School and Union, the library was a quiet, safe place where they could. A change from when I was there, but they didn't have lunch in the library and. And, and recover from, my kids weren't fond of crowds, and so they, they found it there. That's all my way of saying that, you know, we do, we recognize the importance of teacher librarian in the libraries in our schools and. Continue to be very supportive of that structure. So please convey your members that, that is not going away ever. They, yeah. Not if I have anything to say about it. Thanks.
Oops. Hey, great, so more recognition tonight. Director Ronald will read the Public Schools Volunteer Week Proclamation.
Hey, I always enjoy reading this proclamation every year, volunteers have always had. And it's kind of where I started and how I ended up here. Okay, so the state of Washington proclamation, whereas volunteer service is integral and, integral in addressing local and national issues, and it's an effective strategy to unite communities while meeting critical needs. And whereas the volunteer hours of Washingtonians demonstrate a strong and enduring commitment to public service and represent an astounding annual investment of approximately $5 billion. And whereas Washington is blessed with individuals of all ages who selflessly dedicate their time and energy to performing acts of goodwill and improving the quality of life for all people. And whereas it is important to honor those who give their time, talent, and resources for the betterment of their communities. Now therefore, I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim April 18th through 24th, 2021, as Volunteer Appreciation Week, Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in recognizing and supporting those who volunteer and serve. Signed this 13th day of April, 2021, Governor Jay Inslee.
And my understanding is that Art Discovery Coordinator Karen Rivera will come up and accept the award, and I think she's going to maybe have somebody come up front with her and talk a little bit about the program. Yeah, that'd be great.
Hi, good evening. So Art Discovery is the art curriculum for elementary schools, and even though it's the, the official curriculum for our schools, it's presented in the classrooms by all volunteers. And as you know, we have no volunteers on campuses as of yet, but I brought with me tonight Crystal Moore, she is the parent volunteer at Fisher's Landing, she is the Art Discovery Coordinator for Fisher's Landing, there's our acting principal. And I just wanted her to represent all the volunteers in the program tonight, but also she's taken it a step up, she's leveled it up, she has found a way to have our student art on display at both Dots Donuts, if you cruise on through. She has found a way to have our student art on display at both Dot's Donuts, if you cruise on through, and Sees the Bay. So that's a shout out to our, our partners who display our student artists as well. So, but that wasn't enough. Crystal has found a way to present her art discovery lessons, which are once a month in fourth grade, two fourth grades, two fourth grade classes via Zoom. So she has asked me to share that she has a profound appreciation for our teachers this year. She's doing that once a month for an hour and she knows that the teachers are doing that all day, every 10. So kudos to Crystal and we're going to let her take home this proclamation for herself. What Art Discovery looks like this year without superstars like Chris Solo is I am sending out a lesson once a month to our instructional coaches and they are sharing that lesson with their communities as best feeds the as best meets the needs of that each school community. So selfishly, what's keeping me going this year is at the end of the lesson, I ask the students to please send me a picture of their project. Every once in a while I get not only a picture, but a, you know, dear Karen E. Rivera, thank you for the art and 10 to 20 emojis. That's good. But last week I managed to get this beautiful student and I wonder if you would just walk in by them. So this is the adorable Brianna Romero, who is a third grade artist from Silver Star. And she just represents what Art Discovery is looking like this year, right? So the lessons have to be accessible to students K through five and at home with little or no, you know, technical support, with little or no supplies. So Brianna, student artist so extraordinary, has managed to make my day and I thought I would just read her short email to you. Hello, exclamation point. My name is Brianna Romero. I'm in third grade and I go to Silver Star Elementary School. And I just wanted to say what this picture means to me. The lesson was abstract art and the point of the lesson was abstract art conveys meaning through feeling or move or tells a story. See. So what this means to me, what the top left circles mean to me is I'm weird, as you can see with the green and blue. I'm elegant. I'm polite to people. What the top right circle means to me is even though I fall, I can get back up. And if I can't get up, I believe in myself and hold my head high and keep walking forward. What the bottom left circle means to me is that I love the people who are there for me and the people that keep my head held up high. What the bottom right circle means to me is my athlete self and also shows some of my hobbies. The wavy brown lines are for my music musicalness. Musicalness. The blue is water I like to stare at parentheses, water is very satisfying parentheses. The black is track. I love to run and I run fast. The black stripes are for my Taekwondo. And I have a black belt and have been training since I was three. The purple is for being weird and I used to be bullied for being weird and I didn't care about that though. They're just jealous trying to bring me down, so I don't get back up. I am also the very first ever girl in my family, and I mean all of my family, even the ones in Mexico. I am the very first girl to play soccer in my family. Sincerely, Brianna. So I'm just happy to say that art education is happening in this crazy, crazy unprecedented times. And we're so grateful for volunteers like Crystal, teachers that are making it work and for all of you because you always have supported art education. Thank you very much. I was an Art Discovery mom when my kids were in school. All I can say is I'm never going to be allowed to use plaster of Paris.
I would just like to say on behalf of all of volunteers, parents, districts, everybody. This proclamation, you know, says a lot in the investment from our volunteers is at $5 billion estimated. That says a lot. A lot of what we do without volunteers, from classroom parents or helpers to PTA to art discovery. And that's just within our school education. Our foundation is all volunteers. And that's where I started and it's it really, if you don't have a passion for it when you start, you're going to come out with one because it just, it envelops you and you become part of a family and volunteering is a much needed, especially now with everything else going on and it's I guess I'm getting all tongue tied because there's, there's volunteers. The fact that they do give up so much of their own time and energy away from their own family and their own responsibilities to give back to their community and to help those that are less fortunate. There's, they all should have super Superman capes on or Superwoman capes on because that's really what they are. So thank you very much for all you do.
That was awesome. What grade is she in? What a writer. Not only an artist, but a writer. I think it's amazing, especially when we think about this past year, volunteers were able to get out and do the things that they normally do. And I know that a lot of people miss it. And I'm hoping that we will get back to the time where people can get out again, but they come in for force because we really need them and we love the support. But I also want to thank you for finding ways to be super creative and continuing with good work and supporting us, you know, so thank you so much for coming tonight.
Yeah, I can only hope that. I've heard that from parents begging, begging me to get the board to find ways to get volunteers something to do. They miss it. It's a grief not to be able to come into help. And I'm really looking forward to pandemic dying back down. And I think, I think we'll have a lot of that resurgence. It's many people who can spare because it's a way to reconnect. It's going to be very important. I saw volunteers at work with, I was invited to, this won't come as any surprise, but to have a look at the way they're doing competitions in the robotics club at Union and saw the way the volunteers there were organizing themselves online and asserting that same creativity to keep the club going and competition team going. So these kids have happened in something. So there they were operating their robot without any competition around them and faithfully recording the timings, just trying to make it work. And you can see a lot of vitality in the kids' eyes and their eyes, faces are covered in masks. And yeah, we, now I'm rambling. It's the appreciation of people who, who bring themselves and their hearts to this and don't ask for anything. Not a thing. I mean, I know that we're in a struggle with people who started in education that way. That's just what this culture is like. It's all about. Thank you so much.
Ladies. And then next we have a department spotlight. Oh, there he is. Brian, Chief Schools Officer Brian Brimstead will.
I just wanted to thank the school board and Mike for highlighting the IT department. So we have some representatives of the IT department. If they could kind of come on up and then I just have a couple of things to say. Hope we could Ash, Ashton and Austin could come up with the why not? If it goes, if it goes bad, they'll just fix it. We're fine.
Yeah, sorry if we lose Zoom or anything. It's because they're all standing up in front of us. We'll be back soon.
Yeah. So this is just representative of the IT department. There's a couple of things I like to say. I just, it's an amazing department, amazing team. I learn a lot from these folks every single day. They have a really incredible view of the entire district. They're connected to every school, every student, every staff member. Every time somebody in the district is trying to do something new, it always has an IT component. Before I turn over to Derek to introduce folks, I just wanted to read a couple of quotes from principals. So we just ask principals, give feedback on IT department. And when we have service tickets, they give feedback and I don't know, I think there's like 30,000 service tickets this year, roughly, roughly 30,000.
Probably 30,000.
Yes. So there, but it always gives you an opportunity to give feedback. And, and so that's one way to hear it, but we also just ask the principals. So here's just a couple of quotes from different principals across the district. Our IT contact person is amazing. She is so quick to respond, so fast and thorough and supportive of all staff, certificate and classified. She works a troubleshoot and also a super knowledgeable, often fixing the problem right away. Another principal. Responsive, consistent, proactive, student focused and creative in finding solutions. And in the pandemic, as we know, there's been lots of opportunities to solve problems. Other principal relentless in his support of Pacific through the hectic year. His calm demeanor and can-do attitude put our staff at ease because we know he will take care of all our tech needs. Very deserving of recognition. We could have not done this year without him. Kind of getting the theme here is here's another one. She went out of her way to front load any tech concerns that surfaced when teachers configured their classrooms for simultaneous teaching. Weeks before the return of students, she's a problem solver who approaches challenging situations with kindness and composure, composure. She is incredibly responsive, acts in the best interest of students and teachers. Last one. We've had many technical challenges here, both with hardware and a steep learning curve in a transition to hybrid. And he was amazing. He came every morning when we were training staff and helped alleviate a lot of anxiety for teachers. Those are just a sample from our principals and from people across the district. So I think it really does represent the IT department and then I'm going to turn over to you.
Hi, I'm Derek DZ. I'm Director IT Operations. I want to say thank you to the board for the recognition. Not typical, you know, IT gets recognized unless something's broken. So I appreciate that and it means a lot. I think we've been able to accomplish a significant amount of work over the last three or four years. And in spite of all the various challenges that we've seen as a district. And I just wanted to let the board know that I feel supported by Brian, all the members of the cabinet and superintendent. Amazing working relationship. We've been able to accomplish a lot, whether it's supporting Sue and her bond projects or even managing several of our own bond projects and then also just supporting operations and those. That's me. I'll, Elizabeth, I'm sure so.
There's a two minute time limit.
I'm Elizabeth Schalk. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the manager of IT Support Services. So my team are the techs that run around the building and fix things. I just want to thank the board and the superintendent for the support of technology in the hands of our students and staff. Last summer, prior to the pandemic, we had just finished a refresh of elementary in two through five, which gave us the amount of devices we needed when there was a mass exodus of devices out of elementary into the hands of families that needed them to do remote learning. Without the support of the board, we wouldn't have had enough devices. So and it also allowed us to just service everything we had. So our team, our whole department works really hard to make sure everything gets taken care of. And we love helping students. We're kind of far removed, but we do a lot of stuff. So we just appreciate the board's support.
My name's Rob Gardner. I'm the Director of IT Applications and Services. So my team is comprised of the Student Information System Team, Application Support. We'd like to thank Superintendent and the board for all your support and recognizing our department. We do a lot of the behind the scenes. So all the connecting of third-party products, curriculum products, business applications. Of course, managing the student information system, supporting our schools in news.
Bryce Ray, I'm the Manager of IT Systems and Security. So kind of like Rob, my team is in the background a lot. And also I'd like to echo what everybody else has said. I really appreciate the board and the superintendent taking the time to let us know that we're appreciated. My team is largely responsible for account creation and security issues. Managing the about 400 network printers we have throughout the schools, things like that. So it's a lot of work. It's a great team that supports us all and thank you.
One other thing I want to introduce, we have a couple of our hardware technicians here. And just want to introduce Ashton Tomage and then Austin Johnston. They're usually here for board meetings to support your needs. And then we have Sean Riley, who's been with the district as a hardware technician for many years. So we just thank them too and thank you.
I would like to give special recognition to Austin for helping me stay on track. He's had to help me so many times with my technology issues that, you know. Just got to give him some high five on that one.
He was the one that had her computer a few minutes ago in the back.
He's had my computer many times over the year.
I think maybe Austin's the problem. If I could just real quickly say, you know, a lot of the faces that are in front of us have been in the district a long, and I don't mean that negatively. I mean, just you've got a lot of experience in the district. I think one of the huge successes has been kind of the blending of the IT department with the teaching and learning and how well those groups work together. But it's a very quiet group and it's not a group that's that quick to really put themselves out to, to give themselves the recognition. So I think it's fantastic. We have the opportunity to do this. I do agree, we were in a position to react to the pandemic because of the technology level, because of the work, honestly. You know, John Dieter started years ago and then, and John Stich was participated in and Derek and others that participated in, in making sure that we had the devices. And so we really did, you know, we flipped overnight and the work that went into delivering the devices to kids. Bill mentions the teachers librarians who were a huge part of that work as well at the buildings, but it's really amazing, the work that's gone in and, you know, 30,000 seems like a lot of, but we got 20 some thousand kids. It's really not a huge number of, of issues. We've already started with refreshes for next year, for staff devices, for continued with kid devices. And you remember, we had a conversation right before the pandemic about not having the devices go home with kids and leaving them on carts in the middle schools. So, you know, it's, it's kind of had us completely rethink. I saw a statement also from some parent that was talking about their kids and talking about the lost learning that they've had. And this particular parent talked about, well, my, my child now knows how to cook better than they ever could have cooked. And they also talked about the fact that they understand technology like they never would have understood technology. And that's not something to underestimate. Obviously, we want our kids back. We want to be in school. But the work that these individuals here that they represent. I think a lot of you were here. When I saw Rob was here, I think Sean, Sean might've been here when I first started in the district. Brian was a, a middle school teacher, maybe. Forget about Brian. But these, these are hard, they are hardworking people that have done a tremendous job. And I just want to make sure that while you recognize us for recognizing you, you're really the reason that you're here because you've done such an amazing job. So and Elizabeth has done an amazing job of really kind of putting organization around a structure. I know that there were some folks, maybe even in this room that thought, well, I don't know if Elizabeth quite has the technical skills. But Elizabeth has the management skills and the organizational skills, which were absolutely what we needed at that. She did, but they were, that was, that was a significant, that was a significant hire in the IT department. When you look back on two years ago and a huge part of the successes we've had, and you see a lot of shaking heads over there. So I want to make sure that that's well understood.
I would also like to just say that IT was also one of those departments that took a big hit. Our budget. I can readjust our budget. You guys lost some people. There was a lot of reorganization. So in all of this, you know, we talk about all these things that have happened. You guys have been in the forefront of kind of getting it every single time, whether it be, you know, the reallocation of the team. And then going right into COVID and having to send all that out and then spending all that time getting distance learning 2.0 ready for the start of the next school year. When we really didn't know what that was going to look like, if that's where we were going to go or, so you guys have as are our quiet warriors. You keep us afloat and we definitely couldn't do this without you guys. Not this time. But thank you for everything you guys have done. But thank you for everything you guys have done. I know my kids are wizards at the computer and they're showing me stuff now. So I appreciate everything you guys have done over the past couple of years. Thank you.
I've done your job. Most of my notes, but everybody else helped us. It's just that my career isn't IT software. I run the office 365 installation for my company. I don't think it's, it's more complex when it's 25,000, but it's still complex when it's three. It's, it's difficult. Complex cognitive work always. And appreciate that you brought this department forward for this today. There's so much about you. So on the sun. And you only really call on folks when there's something going on wrong or you don't understand. And you have to become the teachers of the teachers. And hearing those kinds of appreciations coming from principals, the way that you read those, Brian, that's, that makes me feel better. And knowing that we have a system that appreciates you. These are the folks who know what went wrong with the technology and excruciating detail. And so I think we need to we need to hear from them about that at some point as we're building our budget for the next coming year. Is it that? I have my doubts that we won't still be emasculated by September and still have some requirements of three, given that the pandemic seems to be progressing in the moment. But yes, thank you so much for all the work that you do. All the five of us, six of us on the board, I know what it's like and it can be, can be difficult and it can be so.
I just want to say thank you for, well, I've already said thank you to the guys that have helped us through our board meetings since we went back in person because it's not an easy task. But also for being so patient when we submit a ticket. Because I was, we're kind of jokingly, I'm sure that we've all called at some point and everybody is so patient and understanding and we just get that feeling that that's the way it is with all 30,000. So thank you.
Hey. All of our wonderful recognitions and now it's time. Approved the board consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor? Sorry, I was waiting for Julie's thing to pop on. Hi.
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 I first. Right. Oh my gosh, we have more special recognition.
Oh, we've got to do. Did I miss? I move that we adopt or approve the superintendent's consent agenda as presented. Second. And a post. Now the new administrator.
Yeah, so. We have an introduction of a new administrator who's not really new.
I think Janey's going to come up initially. There's Janey back there. I'm pointing over here. Janey's back there.
There you go. Thank you, Janey. Thank you for having me. I was going to ask Kimberly to join me and Scott Monroe as well. Excited to be able to do this in front of you in person tonight. I know the board really appreciates this. It's nice to be able to recognize and and I will just do a quick little biography with Lee and then Scott's going to talk. So Kimberly's been with us since 2000 and I was in the 18 and she's at Baker Park. I did say I have her here this evening. Thought to say a few words and
So when Kimberly joined our administrative team after a successful internship with the district and with Bill Moment and myself. We, of course, were very fortunate to have Kimberly joining us in that capacity. And she was very fortunate to be joining at Fisher's Landing. An exemplary principal in Judy Deroche. Had worked for the district very successfully and at a very high level for a number of years, serving us as principal with Riverview. And then, of course, Judy and the Fisher's team welcomed Kimberly with open arms and Judy, with her style of leadership, began immediately to work side by side with Kimberly. They became an outstanding administrative team at the school level and worked successfully together at Fisher's for a little bit more than two years. When unfortunately, things took a turn and Judy needed to make some decisions to take care of herself, as you all know. And eventually earlier this year decided it was best to retire from the district. All of us who knew Judy in that regard. Into that void without missing a single beat stepped Kimberly, who, as I mentioned before, had been teaming very successfully and working with Judy. We asked Kimberly to step in as acting principal. Pointed by a retired administrator from Washougal named Laura Bolt, who has been at Fisher's for this entire year since then as well. Kimberly immediately brought the team together. Fisher's and all the work. Everything that, you know, COVID entails and all the complexities this year, they didn't miss a beat under Kimberly's leadership. Very appreciative of her. Kimberly, of course, when the superintendent approved the posting for the position, applied for that. Did an amazing job throughout a very rigorous process with some very intense competition. We're very blessed in Evergreen to have a number of outstanding people apply for positions when we have them. Kimberly deservedly came out on top and I could not be happier to have her join our team in a different position and to have her standing here before us as the for Fisher's Landing. We're very, very proud of her and very honored to have her. Welcome.
Guys, for those who know me well, this will be unusual because I usually like to talk a lot. But tonight, feeling a little bit nervous, I'm really honored, appreciated and humbled for the opportunity to continue working with Fisher's Landing community. My pride was beaming tonight as you saw our discovery here and really proud to say we host our discovery at our Fisher's Landing right now temporarily. So that's exciting. And of those 30,000 IT tickets, I think three are mine today. Not just today, but thank you because a couple of Marathi results. So that's amazing. I really am honored and humbled and excited to continue the work that my mentor Judy set forth, my work wife, if you will. And continuing that work and honoring the board directives and working with Equity and her tenant too, and supporting all the community and the students and staff as best I can. So thank you for the opportunity.
I would just say Kimberly did a tremendous job in the interview and she's done a tremendous job filling in from the beginning and that was obvious through the process. And so we're very lucky to have her continue in the role as the permanent principal at Fisher's Landing where I, I had older kids that went to school there. So we talked a lot about the culture and, and it was, it was good conversations. She's going to do a great job.
Going to say, because you spent all those years at Heritage and then you went to elementary, big, really big difference, right? But I was going to, I was going to say that they sent her to Heritage and he was friends with many girls on the dance team. And I know how much he meant to all of them. So I hold it all the time. So I know you're going to do great and really well. Thank you.
I'm excited.
It's enough for me. That math teacher, way to go. Thank you for doing that.
So much. Enjoy the project.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have superintendent report.
Yes, I've got a few things to go through. So try to move through them relatively quickly.
Like a packet over there.
It's a, there's just a lot of writing. There's just, there's just notes. The first thing I would just want to mention is before the break, we had the new guidance from the CDC, which then Governor Inslee rolled out, I don't know, a little before spring break with respect to the six feet to three feet. When you dug into the actual details, it wasn't purely a six feet to three feet move. It was three feet for students in certain situations. And so we've really honestly been working the last week or two, plus with our internal folks with our labor partners. And I anticipate that tomorrow, if not early tomorrow, by Thursday, we'll have our, our kind of plan for what we're looking at for the rest of the year, which would also include like Julie's going to share in a, in our workshop today, the summer program plans. As well as kind of the thoughts about next year. Rob mentioned that his belief that we could very well be faced with similar conditions as we go through that. And I don't, I don't disagree with that potential assessment. So we will, we'll, we'll have some conversation, we'll have some comment on that tomorrow and put our plan out tomorrow.
We hope for the best, but
we can't, I mean, we, we've been hoping for the best for well over a year at this point. And I do know that we've got a lot of our staff vaccinated and that's a good thing. But we continue to, we continue to get through a very challenging time for families, for kids, for staff and for the community. You, we, we honored volunteers today. Really quickly, want to just mention a couple of partnerships. Then Connect, I've mentioned earlier. Scott Keeney, John Dieter, Evergreen Vancouver are working really closely with N Connect to start that backup again. We had been pretty close with them, but with respect to the mentorships for not only our staff, but our students, we met before the break, had a good meeting. We continue with that. Last week. Three, I guess, one entrepreneur and a couple of business owners in the trade industry and the construction industry, we met with up at Evergreen High School. Walked through the facility, looked at some of the CTE programs. They have a strong interest in kind of working with the math and green construction and kind of, we've already kind of got plans in place to add a cover to allow for some of the work, but they are very energized to help us through that process and create maybe even a larger partnership than what we might have. Quail Homes. And again, I think it's, I can't remember his first name, Aaron Patrick. Yeah, Patrick Gin. And then the guy by the name of Mr. Green, who is a, been a very successful businessman. So we're kind of talking with them about partnerships around the skilled trades and, and helping advance some opportunities for kids there. We, before the break again, Jenny and I were able to zoom in on a exit audit meeting with our auditors. We completed a clean audit this go around for the 1920 school year. A good thing. That's a good thing. Kind of nice that we had that. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Also want to make mention of Gail just put out a press release on the resolution that was just passed 6463, which passed tonight around the potential expansion of projects for the bond construction program. From the savings that we've seen throughout this project, in particular, believe a letter is going to go out to parents, Mill Plain, letting them know of the replacement of the building and kind of talk a little bit about that process. So you know, we've, we've had, I think, maybe four public meetings where we've kind of talked about the savings and the possibility for rebuilding Mill Plain. This will be the first that we've actually put that out as a press release now that the board has taken action on that. And I think it's, it's going to be really well received by the community and just a huge tribute to the planning upfront on the bond project for, for the management throughout. Sue's kind of peeking out from behind somebody's head. Don't, yeah, no, that's, it is true. They've done a tremendous job. And so I just wanted to mention that in case you've seen anything on that. I had mentioned that I've been out meeting, you know, I meet with principals all the time, but I've been meeting with associate principals as well. I've got five left out of our, I think we've got something like in the 40s. So I feel really good about the fact that we've gotten through that. Wanted to mention really quickly also that we received a request for live and learn, which is the identity Clark County that recognizes a staff member and a volunteer. Looking at this year. So if there's any, any individuals that you might think of, or you may have thought of that you want to bring forward from the board, just let me know and we can work together on getting that submitted. We learned today that the free meals that we've been able to offer for pretty much from the pandemic forward last year, and then they extended it to this year. They've extended that for 2122 through a different federal program, but the free meal program is still going to be in place for next year. So now basically the federal government has made that available through 2122. So that's a great thing. When you go out and talk with the building administrators, then they talk about the impact of that on the students and the number of meals that we've been able to provide. That's a good thing. So that's great. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, Scott gave me an email this afternoon, see if I can find it around, just letting you know that we've, I think, had 11 thus far. Boundary exception requests from the elementary boundary exception process, they've all been approved. Those are fifth grade requests. So just let you know that we are receiving some and that we are approving them. And that's all I have.
Next up, we have a couple of textbook adoptions. The first is for AP Spanish literature and I am just here to talk us through that, please. Thank you.
Even I guess, last time I presented the resource and I don't know exactly who was able to review that. There was information on how to access that resource digitally, including a digital facsimile of the textbook itself that will get in both the digital and physical form, but also many other resources too. Of course, can't be here tonight. She did give me some information if it's me.
From the audience regarding this?
So we'd sign that Spanish literature.
I, the question I have is up the team that reviewed this as far as.
So the teacher at Mountain View who will be teaching a course first because it's mainly, the course is developed to be a place for the dual immersion students to go. Also, the teacher at Heritage that will be teaching that course from those dual immersion students arrive there. Camille Empi, who is in the ELL department, is also on that team and Sean Waters from Mountain View, who oversees world languages there. And I was there too, but not as a Spanish expert at all.
Have any parents that have an expertise in that committee?
No.
Happening with our parent. Hey. So this will come back at our next board meeting for uh, we have veterinary science.
So I think Shelley Latherwood. Okay, good. So she is our teacher, also representing the curriculum. And we also presented, like Ryan had the last meeting, and this is a textbook that will serve for our vet science classes, one through four, because we've added a second year into our program. So we haven't had a textbook before, so. Questions or?
Questions from the audience regarding this? I was hoping to take a peek at that book.
I'll bring it.
Oh, I can go get one for you.
Yeah, well, I could bring you the copy. I was going to bring it into the office, into here tomorrow, but I could just bring it to you.
Okay.
At some point.
Really? I have two more in my office.
I'll just get it from Rob, and that way you don't have to have multiple copies out there. That's great. Thank you.
We did read through the book, my office a little bit, take some time with it, and was pleased with the contents there. We actually emotional parakeets, we actually used the contents of this book to help us take care of a sick bird.
Perfect.
We had a parakeet go through veterinary services while we had the book in the house and actually consulted it for help. And, and it's, speaking of the text itself, it's, it's well written, it's clear, looks like it's right, right aligned with the the age groups that we're teaching. It's very good. That's, that's what she said.
Okay, so how's your bird?
Oh, we're not sure. I think we adopted a bird we needed rescue. And the tests are inconclusive, but that's parakeets for you, you know. Just to find out. You know, we'll take good care of it. I will have better advice for it.
Well, I was going to say, before, before you were telling us the, the status of the bird, I was going to say that story was probably the best thing I've heard all day. Use the textbook to.
Parakeets make people happy, it's just true.
Book last weekend when our dog had a stroke.
Apparently, we all need a copy of the textbook.
Like I said, I got two more.
I'm a little afraid, though, that all of us are now going to be trying to be vets to our pets because of this textbook, so maybe we shall stop reading it.
It's like, it's like Googling symptoms, right? So we have, I should clarify, we have one year, this is second year, or?
So we have, I'm, uh, we had our group of teachers that came together to put together the second year. We have a vet science, one, two, the first year already. We added a three, four, but we did not have a textbook. They were just putting together resources as a group, and so it's just part of developing that program pathway.
And I think it's a great program because I think there's going to be a lot of people interested in it, as you heard in the first words, but just gives kids another option of something that they're interested in learning and a lot of science.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of, lot of interest with the animals, so.
Focus, the confidence, the careful about that, taking with trying to provide medical services to do a textbook is just, it's, it's, it's in there as well. So. This is a disclaimer.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, Gail Spohler, our director of communications. Good news, more good news.
Good evening. So we start tonight's good news with thoughtful words from our students as they shared their stories in the first ever spoken word contest as part of our Black History Month. Please take time to listen to the edit there if you haven't. They share and celebrate people of color in our community. Very wonderful compilation and sorry, Clarissa did a great job pulling that together. And then I'm also celebrating with great awards courtesy of our foundation. So moving to other celebrations in our schools, Furcrest held a resource fair, and then Burton celebrated their safety fair with, of course, otter pops. I'm not sure, all of a sudden otter pops have become the great celebratory treat for our students, but they were very appreciated. So you'll see photos from both of those. And I know it is dinner time. Actually, it's probably past dinner time, so you may want to wait and not yet look at the Riverview Cooking Club because they are cooking up a storm. And it's a brand new after-school club that was started and is being run by one of our school counselors, Tiffany Morrison. And again, kids are doing a lot of good work cooking and also incorporating some of their academics with measuring and, and just all of that. So that story is embedded there too. Just a reminder to our greater community and something that our board members can, you also celebrated as we toured our new community health clinic up at Evergreen High School in conjunction with C Mar. You know, you were able to see it up close recently, and we know that more and more students are coming back in as they're returning into the building. And while most of our students and staff took time off over spring break, one of our Mountain View students instead was hard at work. He is part of our internship program with Skanska, who's our Mountain View contractor. And again, a great story of him out there on the job site working along. We had a discussion as well last week, and it looks like Skanska will be looking for another intern for over the summer and continuing that process. And as long as the construction's going on at Mountain View. So our students continue to virtually attend conferences. They are winning competitions and even qualifying for international events. You'll see a listing of the recent DECA students that won at the state level and then are continuing on to the international competition. And just as a little preview for next month's good news, usually Mike scoops me, but I wanted to let you know that you will soon see, starting, I believe, next week in our greater community's social media posts, Rob, Julie, and Mike participating in Clark and Callet's Public Health I Got the Shot COVID Vaccine Advocacy Campaign. So watch for that coming to social media, might even be in the Colombian. And I'm sure we'll share that on our social media as well. So that's your good news for the month.
Oh. And we have a budget update from superintendent, no?
Really quickly, I, I, over spring, spring break is a great time for staff to kind of re fresh, our kids to kind of refresh a little bit as well. It's also a great time to get work done in the office because there's not many people around. I know Sue and I feel that way. So I spent spring break kind of looking at our projection for the year. And you'll remember, we, you know, obviously we faced similar financial impacts of many districts, all districts in the state with respect to enrollment declines, transportation impact, the cost of the unemployment pool, insurance for furloughed employees. So without the support from the federal government through S R one, S R two, and then ultimately S R three, it would have been very difficult for us to, we, we would have had a very difficult year. And going through that work, I, I think that we're probably going to end up having to rely about, on about twenty million of those S R funds in this school year, which is a pretty significant number because we did go through certainly very impactful reductions of classified staff where people were furloughed and their paychecks were impacted fairly significantly. Even with doing that, we still will likely rely on those federal funds to a pretty significant effect. And so I just wanted to let you know that the impacts, obviously enrollment, when the enrollment declined, you know, special ed again is funded only up to a certain percentage of your basic ed enrollment. So basically, we artificially had capped special ed enrollment then as our basic ed enrollment declined. Our lev equalization amount, we saw the estimated decline from Senator Cleveland's money that had been distributed. We knew that that money was going to go away, but we've even seen a little larger drop in that. So thankful for the fact that we did have those funds to help us through that process. I would say that our budget work is ongoing right now in the current year. Folks in HR, Cindy Madsen, the primary person contacting, working with Jennifer Jacobson, who coordinates throughout the buildings. One of the, I think, another one of the groups that we will be bringing in, another unsung group is the HR department, because every one of these things that we've done with respect to folks positions has meant multiple impacts on the HR department, whether that's classified personnel, certified personnel, or payroll. So it's, it's been significant, and they're now just, because they just keep doing it, now they're working on putting the budget together for next year. Legislative session is supposed to end on the twenty-fifth, which is Sunday evening. Heard from Melissa yesterday that the budget is expected to be released tomorrow at some point. So they've got some agreement on that, but we don't really see the state stepping in and helping much. They're looking at the federal funds that have been provided at the state level as the way to resolve issues. The only question is whether we might see some state support for the transportation formula. And so we will have a better idea of what that looks like tomorrow. So thankfully, we'll end up the year fine this year with the federal funds. We will be able to use federal funds also for twenty-one, twenty-two, the S R three dollars. And we just keep on plugging along with everything. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Twenty million for this year from the S R funds added an estimate of how much?
So the S R one was a total of about four point nine. We used a million last year, so it's about four million from this year's allocate. So S R one carried into this year. Then the next sixteen is from S R two, which the allocation was right around sixteen, but they held back ten percent. So we, we believe we'll get about eighteen. So we'll have a little from S R two, and then we have S R three is another forty. So that's potentially to help us over the next two years. And as we work through budgets for the next couple of years. So the total amount for us was approximately sixty-four million.
Is there a statutory expectation or legislative expectation?
On how to spend it?
On, not on how to spend it, but on making it go two years.
No, that's a, well, it's a federal thing that allows you to spend it over a two-year period through twenty, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So that's federal language that's, that allows it to be spread out that far.
Can you talk a little bit about the thousand line and revenues?
Off the way.
We can, we can look back on this later if you don't have the information. On the report of the, the attachment there, under revenues on the first page, thousand line, other agencies and associates. The balance, I guess the actual for the year on that is a couple hundred thousand dollars higher than our original budget.
You looking at the March one or the February one? I'll look at the March one.
I'm in March one, most of it is. Just, I guess, for the sake of public information.
You're talking about other agencies and associates. It, it's a, I mean, it's, when we budget, it's basically something that grants run through, so it would likely have been a grant that just came in higher than what we expected when we built the budget. You're talking about the fifty-five thousand versus three hundred and thirteen thousand?
So.
That would mean that we've collected for the year more than what we had budgeted for one of our, for a grant budget that.
So that's actually better news.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's.
It's, it's just the way the budget page is formatted. It's got a little minus sign next to it.
Well, even though it says minus, it actually means that we have more money than what we budgeted.
That's the explanation.
Right.
Goes with this report.
Right.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
Hi.
Yes.
Uh, we have this in comments. This is a time where citizens may address the board. Is a time when our comments to three minutes, it cannot be legal or personnel in nature, and it cannot be regarding anything that's already discussed on the agenda tonight. I have a couple people on the list. So Tiffany Warner, are you here still? Oh, okay. If you'd like to come up to the podium, address word and for, address for the record, please.
You hear me there? All right. Good evening. My name is Tiffany Warner Manjia. I am the mother of a second grader at Furcrest Elementary School. What a democracy you have that we can't discuss anything we've already talked about. I am here to represent children that are suffering from extreme mental health issues and depression right now. I am here to represent parents that are bullied out of their opinion that don't align with the narratives of being in fear of what's going on in this virus. I am a medical professional and LVN with twelve years of medical experience. I'm a whistleblower in the Bay Area at a hospital that was lying to you in the media. This is a ninety-nine percent survival rate. This is CDC. Today, and a survey came out, there is an article that I encourage everyone to go to the website, is the National Center of Biotechnological Information, a government website that is providing a seven university study that is showing that masks are not helping. They have not helped, and they have actually caused more damage. So my question to you, while you guys give praise to yourselves about how great the tech team has been, and just how much you filed through this year, is how about how suicide rate for children has been up two hundred percent? How about how isolated children are at home and the abuse, the verbal, sexual, and the depression that they're experiencing has increased by probably an infinite amount of pain? And why you sit here in your complacent faces and your complacent media narratives that you listen to, who's speaking for the kids? Who's doing their own research? I know you guys have been getting my, my emails with all the different sources of information. So I ask you where your information is coming from. Because if this is a disease that is ninety-nine point nine percent survivable, why are children suffering the most? Why are you up here pretending that you advocate for the life of children when you want to put them in a smart prison behind a screen? Who cares if they could cook better? They are eight. My child is eight years old. I could care less if she could cook better because of a digital learning experience. My child has developed a jaw jerking anxiety issue because she doesn't know how to manifest her feelings. As well as I'm trying to work with her, parents are at home trying to deal with their own depression and their own mental health issues. And everyone here who is so on the woke movement, I see so many of you want to talk about adding the Spanish, yet you don't even have a Spanish-speaking parent on the board. I see all of you talking about how you're woke, and you've got all these ideas about the BLM and all this stuff, but you know what? Let me remind you that the same ancestors we had fought to have muzzles taken off of their face. And the complacency you have here tonight in, in suffocating the voices of these children, making them breathe in bacterial pneumonia microbials and, and fibers from this mask, and then you're going to do it for another year? Do you not see the fabric of society falling apart here and you're just playing along with, oh, this will end soon? This isn't ending soon. This is not ending soon. I promise you that. I promise you that. This is not ending soon and not every parent, see, I'm fortunate enough to be sovereign and I can take my child next year and I can homeschool her. Or I could maybe have my own little community of people, but not everybody could do that. You sit here and talk about all the unfortunate people you're going to help and you're going to pay their little rent with based off their 30% income. Yet you are gaslighting the actual problem, which is your complacency with the government, because you will not speak up to the government. These people are poor because of the government. In the first place. And then the government wants to hand them, oh, let me keep you oppressed, but then here is your little handout. And here you are just up here, oh, our little socialized lunches now that are free for all the kids. Is anyone asking where it's coming from? Where the food's coming from? Maybe I don't want my kid on that food. How do we know where it's being, where it's being farmed at? Why does no one ask these questions right now? And you sit here with your, your judgments and everyone, this divisive game we are playing with who stands for masks? Who doesn't? I bet you, you didn't think I would look like this with the emails I got. I bet you, you thought I was going to be some white Christian Republican that came in talking about sovereign will. Yep. So that's what we're doing here is we're dividing people by what you think people should look like or what they should agree with. And I'm telling you right now, you better act like you want a job. You better act like you care because there was an underground movement of parents who are leaving public school systems at a rapid rate. If you guys will not work with us to stand up for these children, we don't need you. And I put that on everything I love. Because there are parents who will fight for their children. I will die for the things I believe in, and there are many of us out there. This needs to be looked at as a far bigger issue than you are taking it. I cannot believe that you go through this whole entire agenda of irrelevant things when your children have not even been in school learning. I'm disgusted. And I came in here asking God for grace and to be a presentation of peace for you. And as I sit here and listen to this manipulation, I cannot even. Begin to believe what the children are probably feeling they can't identify. So I ask going forward that the links that I have been sending you and that the comments that I have made might plant a seed for you to research some other things, because there is information out there. There is censorship beyond belief and the media is a lie. And I'm going to end it there and I'm going to leave because I'm hungry. And let me say this on the last note, you should let citizens speak first because we got kids at home that need to eat. We shouldn't be up here till 7:30, speak in our mind while y'all get awards.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. And then we have Elise Petosa. Who's on virtual, thank you. Oh, okay. Anyone else?
Plus she's 3606.
Hope we've got a young raised. Okay, now can you hear me? Can you ask me to unmute again?
Okay. Uh, do we have Bruce?
Elise. Oh, yes, yes, I'm here. Can you hear us? Oh, okay. Whew. All right. Sticking with this, Elise. Hey, I didn't wait this long to go away. I am really hoping that we look at this pandemic, pandemic as a way to a, address some of our kids' needs in a better way than we have historically. I, people use words like learning loss and we're behind and we're going to catch up. But I think that our kids, like we talked about earlier, have learned so many new techniques. And so about technology, they've learned skills about independence, they're very resilient. And as we plan for next year, I'd really like us to build on the strengths and the skills that they've gotten versus looking at their behind. But I do want to look at some of the opportunities they've missed. I talked to a kindergarten teacher and she reminded me that kindergartners didn't get to play this year. They didn't get to have kitchen centers or block centers or puzzle centers. And during those times is when kids learn those negotiation skills, cooperation skills. So I want us to think, if we're able to, you know, I know you guys are talking about restrictions, but I want us to think about when, then what does first grade look like? How can we give those kindergarten, those students who are kindergartners this year, that opportunity to play and to learn those skills next year? And I think another example, a student, a teacher gave me, she had a class one year that had a wide range of math levels. And so another interventionist came in during math time so that they could divide the kids up so that they could all get enough one-on-one or small group attention to work on their math skills. So I would suggest that we talk to our teachers, our, the experts, the students who are the experts about some of the things they feel we need for the coming year. I have tried to introduce or try to interview many students. And I've asked them, what was their favorite, most favorite about being home and what was their least favorite? And their least favorite is usually around being able to see their friends or being able to communicate with your, their teacher. So, and, and I apologize, I didn't give my address and all of that, but I'm a school social worker at Sunset Elementary School. And so the thing that is near and dear to my heart is the mental health of our kids and providing that S E L. And as we move forward, I know being back in the building, I really, that's been my focus is the mental health of the students. So as we move forward, providing academic opportunities, I just also want to highlight that we need to keep in mind the mental health supports, not only for our students and our families, but our teachers too. So I just, because I was supposed to give you my address, it's 610 West 17th Street. Was there something else I needed to give you? Okay.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to take the opportunity, this has been heavy on my heart that we have this opportunity to build a new school system for our kids. And I'd really like us to do that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being so patient.
Yep, we have board comments. Do we have any comments by the board tonight?
Feels like it's been a very packed night already.
Yeah, I usually say something, but I think there's, I have some student guests who workshop and I'd rather focus on that and.
I guess there is just, there is one thing I would like. They'll have the microphone up, so I didn't know if you were done. And one of, I guess after our last board meeting, I guess it was the day after our last board meeting and Gail kind of touched on it, but we took a tour of our new C Mar clinic up at Evergreen High School and got to just see the, the facility and meet with the healthcare professionals up there and ask them a lot of questions. And it was been a long time in the making and I was just, I'm very proud that we have that open and available to our students, not only at Evergreen, but in our other schools as well as the community and the families that we support. So are that support us, I guess, too, as well. So that was one of the, the highlights since our last board meeting that we. Yes, to see the little, that little baby come to life. Thanks, Jay, for all your hard work on that.
Hey, any other comments? Okay, let's move things along. We also open things up for any future agenda items.
So you and I talked about this on the phone. Um, I've been asked by our lobbyist, Melissa Bonbowski, in connection with a bill that we'll talk about in more detail. Martha Stone was preparing a modification proposal for transportation funding. They would like our board to submit a position proposal into Wazda's legislative positions to be voted on in September General Assembly. That means that it would come from Evergreen and go through the process for, you know, I am. Mark Watson, or on the legislative committee representing the whole South Coast region. Advocate for that. In doing so, using my expertise and so forth.
Get us the information so we can. Realize ourselves with the majority of it.
Yep, as soon as we can, yes, yeah.
That's great. Thanks, Rob. All right. Now we will go into recess where we will sign documents. And then we will. Reconvene for a board workshop where we will talk about school board, student representatives, a teaching and learning update, legislative update. And then that will be followed by an executive session to review the performance of a public employee scheduled for 45 minutes. Are now officially going to go into recess. Thank you for joining us. To do with our, our ongoing discussion about school board, student representatives. So just to give a little bit of a framework about where we've been and where we're headed. This subject has been near and dear to our hearts for a number of years. When we go to our Wazda school directors, conferences and such, there's. There's often school districts that have students, board members. And so we, we've gone back and forth about how do we incorporate student voice into our board work? And make sure that in a district the size of ours, how do we make sure that we are hearing from different students from different schools, different, you know, socio-economics, different cultures, you know, just damn it. And so it kind of led us down a path of thinking about this as a council that is a subcommittee of the board. Um, the one thing that, I don't know, most people know is that boards are kind of, there are certain statutes and certain parameters that we have in how we function. So if a student is like a technically a board member, they don't have a vote because we're elected by the community, but they can still have input. When we have subcommittees, they're a subcommittee of the board and they're responsible to the board and the board directs the work and also makes a selection of the board, final, final selection of the board members or the committee members and such of, of that nature. And those are just kind of procedural things that, you know, make work for whatever it is that we decide to do. So in our kind of looking into this and kind of developing something. Rachel and Jenny kind of are, have been taking the lead on that, doing their investigation. And in the midst of all of this, Rob introduced me to a lovely young lady. That will, that will introduce with her friends and comrades here. That had been thinking some of the same things we were thinking and had come up with a kind of a, a model plan that we've received copies of and, and so it's just time for us to kind of take that next step. So I'm going to turn this over to Jenny to kind of the, the way on this and we'll go from there. Yeah. Yeah. No, you're fine. This is, this is more casual.
This is 100% informal. Um, we have done all of our presiding stuff before we went into workshop, which is why we're eating dinner while we're, we're doing this. That's how informal we are. But, um, so I'm Jenny, I am one of the board directors. Thank you guys so much for being here with us tonight. I know that it's kind of late. Um, so we appreciate you being here. I'm actually going to ask Rob to introduce, I just want to introduce yourselves. And then we have all read your presentation that you sent over. Thank you so much for all, all the work you have done. In reading through it, I've noticed that there's a lot of things that are similar to the kind of the path that we've gone down. So really what, the way I would like to see kind of our time tonight, we won't take up a whole lot of your time. We're not going to solve the world's problems tonight, but we would love your input going forward as we get this together. And the hope is that we have, you know, people ready to go on by the start of next school year. But just to kind of, you know, just some back and forth with you guys to get your thoughts, your input, just kind of share the stuff that we've kind of come already, you know, come up with or that we have also looked into and then just kind of keep it that way. So we will make you or try to make you feel as comfortable as possible with us. So yeah, so Rob, if you mind.
So on the far end here, and these things are on wheels. If you want to face us rather than coming at an oblique angle, you can turn the tables, turn the tables. No, the tables are on wheels. I don't know, unless you're comfortable that way.
Apparently, not only does Austin do IT, he's also going to.
I want to, well, okay, if you're finding the way you are and where you are, but if you want to face us a little better, please do so. Yeah, that works too. Um, I met Alani, and if I've mispronounced your name. Alani Baldwin, who is one of the leaders of the Students of Color Union at Henry Delax High School. And when we talked about, she actually asked me to use the name Henry Delax High School and I want to respect that. That was in connection with advocacy work. I was looking for students to help offer testimony to a legislative committee or to talk to a legislator. And she was on the list as a volunteer for that. Correct me if I'm wrong about something. But we got into a conversation and during the conversation, she said, I had a plan, I had a plan proposal that I wrote a couple of years ago. And when I shared that with the board, they said, let's see it. So she's here tonight to talk about that and maybe to discuss how that connects with the ideas that you gathered and, and the path that we're on in order to have student voice in a conversation about developing student voice. Alani, could you introduce your friends to us?
Yeah, we're all, we like to go to bed early now.
Yeah, and actually, if you guys don't mind, first, do you mind Rob's getting just like, right?
And give them your microphone.
Yes, we're going to need to get them. Austin, do you have one? So we have a microphone that we will allow you guys to, to share. You just have to.
Rob to microphone hog.
And then if you guys don't actually mind just addressing the board, although the people behind you are great. Like to be able to see your face and I actually cannot see you at all. Nope, you are absolutely, you are fine sitting right there. If you just don't mind, like, I'm one that likes to see when I'm talking to you guys to be able to just see your face. No, I just, I know they look really like intrigued and, and really want to hear from you, but you know, feel free just to talk to us. Go for it. You'll hear it when it turns.
There you go.
There you go. Oh, perfect. I guess, I guess I'll stand or, you know, I'll just sit down. Sorry. This is intimidating, like I said. Um, I did want to come with them kind of a testimony in a speech, um, longer than how much the legislative government gives us a minute, right? With a little green, red, yellow, little lights. So hopefully this makes it a lot less intimidating. But yeah, when I connected with Mr. Perkins and expressed the need for student council, I asked myself three reflecting questions, which was on the Google Docs. As you all should have in front of you, hopefully. But throughout the whole process, I had also reflected amongst my own educational, social and personal experiences at schools in this district. I was drawn to several stories I could talk about with all of you today, but one stood out in particular, and that was my sophomore year of high school. I had showed expressed interest in joining as many clubs as I can, and I promise it wasn't for the college applications, but it was for trying to get more involved with my community and my school and just trying to put myself out there more often. And perhaps one stood out for me, to me that I cannot recall today, but although I can, can tell you that I wanted to join and would do anything to be a member of this club. I will not say the name of the club out of respect for its organization, but when I had found and asked the three boys that were in charge of that club at the time, how could I join? They responded with, you can't join because you're brown. They laughed, sorry. They laughed and I ran to the side of the stairs and I started crying because I wish that I could close my eyes and escape out of the skin that I was in. And it was really hard. Sorry. Okay, um, I express concern of safety for other students like me who might have or will experience what I had experienced to the administration at my school, although they never really called me down for a meeting like they had promised. I was failed by people that I trusted, people that I confined it in and people that the administration can so and so was here to listen to. My story is no far from different than the stories of students of color and friends I interact with every day. Most of us feel as if who we are culturally and socially will never be enough and far from respective than just the labels that we are given. We are far more than just students, and I know we might just look like students or teens or kids, but we are collaborators. We are listeners. We are welcomeers and we are the change. By approving of the student council, you're opening doors to stories like mine that will be heard. You're also opening doors to conversations of the most pertaining and relevant issues students are facing in your district today. And most of all, you're opening, opening doors to opportunities that give students the ability to be effective leaders and make impacts in their communities. Young people and board members can work together to create the necessary conditions for the successful development of the students, their schools and their communities and their districts. This is not just about my voice anymore. It's about all of our voices. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you so much for sharing your story. I know that was hard for you. So thank you for opening up and being vulnerable for us. Passion. Passion for this. For us, one of the biggest things is that we know that our legislators listen or then they listen to us. They want to hear what you have to say. You guys are the ones that are on the front line, so to speak, on day in, day out. And when they make this education, they want to know what the students actually are experiencing from them. We every year we take this information to them, but the most powerful voices are the student voices. And we are very well aware of that. We also make, we here make decisions for you on a daily basis. And it's, we need to have your input to make sure that we are making those decisions accurately and for your best interest. And so that is why we have also been down this path. So I'm glad to have you guys kind of here. Best of this. So thank you again for being here. Also excited that you're from Hila. Or Henry Adelax, sorry. Yeah, we know, we actually, we have been through a conversation in that we need to refer as Henry Adelax. So if we say Hila, just please correct us. Because for me, one of the biggest hurdles I've currently had is how we, how we bring in Henry Adelax and Legacy. They're not as big as our other comprehensive high schools, but their voices matter still. And so that is having you from Henry Adelax. Well, it got me off, you know, too late and excited. Apparently I nerded out on this stuff, but, um, because being at that school, I know that you guys will be able to provide that much more insight into how we can operate those schools into all of this as well. Because there have been talks about just kind of combining them into the other schools and I care to them or to. On your recommendations, what would you, so we have all kind of gone through, you know, both you and us have gone through steps. So what are your biggest recommendations to us going through this and you doing or, you know, filling out all of your reflection questions? We know the why. An example of the how. How do you think this is going to best suit as well as the district's need? And this is an open conversation. So you'll be getting questions from all five of us.
Oh yeah, no worries. I hope you, oh yeah, I can hear you. Um, yeah, so about how, I mean, first of all, it starts with, you know, indirectly including students in the first place. I mean, without, if Mr. Perkins hadn't reached out to me, I wouldn't even believe that you guys would be willing to listen here now. And I feel there's that conversation that many students aren't aware that we are the direct impact and our faces do matter. And, and, and that's for far more many reasons that I can explain later, but students just, I'll say, aren't aware that you guys are willing to listen. So how is, I would, from, from my perspective as a student, it's outsourcing and outreach and saying, hi, we're here, we're here to listen. And we are here to take in any issues, concerns or pertaining relevancy that you might have indirect with the board. As I did, hadn't mentioned, when it comes down to it, laying the foundations of the student advisory board. The membership that, I mean, in terms of the how is really, I don't want to just include students like me, Bailey or Andy that are very open and ending and, and here to, because we are very ASB or outgoing students with a 3.5 GP or higher. I really wanted to see students from a diverse group of socioeconomic classes, culturally and including educationally diverse groups. And for me, that's what's important is those students and especially from me being a student of color in front of a, you know, and, and I did express this to Mr. Perkins, my hesitancy to come here is because the board is all white and it's hard to feel as if, why, how come I matter yet no one looks like me is on the board. But in high tower, you're doing amazing work by the way. But yeah, we don't, we don't see that. We aren't aware of that. And so it's really, oh, sorry, I thought it, sorry. It's really important to know that you guys are willing to listen far more with not just words, but with actions. Cause you know, we do see a lot of performative activism when it comes to conversations like this. So it has to be aligned with throughout plans and like the student advisory board. I don't know.
There you go.
Okay, but we've heard a lot of people talk about mental health today, especially concerned parent and also other teachers and leaders. And I think mental health, especially during the pandemic, is one of the major issues that is plaguing our students. And we need to hear from a student's perspective, what we can do. We know best how students can be supported in their mental health and whether that be like getting more resources to counselors, outreach programs, strengthening those programs, or just letting students know, like Elani said, that the leaders do care about them and care about their mental health. I think we would be really helpful giving that perspective to mental health programs or outreach from the district.
Okay, so I'm also going to hammer home the mental health situation because I have a question for all of you guys. So raise your hand if you have children. Okay. And if some of those children are teenagers or have been teenagers, I bet you all know how it feels for them to come home one day and you're just like, how's your day? How are you feeling? Is everything all right? And all they say is, I'm fine. Because that's all you ever get out of us. And then one day, this is all metaphorical, by the way, I hope none of this has ever happened. They start becoming home more sadder, more gloomier, and you have no idea what to do. Then this situation keeps on happening, all while they're going to school in a situation where they don't know how to leave. They don't know where to get help, especially by POC communities, because I know in my culture, mental health is a taboo. That is not something we talk about. It is considered a weakness and it is considered something that should be dealt with in a way that doesn't affect anyone. And what this leads to is it leads to suicide rates that you would not believe. Because I'm pretty sure all of you want to see your children grow. All of you want to see your children be able to handle their emotions and to just be able to come to a conclusion that their life matters. But when they don't have a voice, they do not have the opportunity to say that their life matters in that way. Because from a young age until K through 12, you are told repeatedly by adults what to do in good, good sense, right? Because obviously you're not going to let a six-year-old do what they want. When they want to touch the stove, you don't let them. But eventually they start having a mind. They start having emotions. They start having feelings. And it doesn't become as simple as telling them yes and no, but they want to learn why. They want a voice. And again, they need someone to turn to. Because I remember when students pass, it is never, and I mean, never a situation that a school ever wants to be in. It take a day to commemorate. A week goes by, he will so remember. A month goes by, there's talk here and there. Two months goes by. The same situation is happening again, this time with a different student, this time in a situation that is also similar. Because when students have no way to speak, again, they fall down the rabbit hole. If they've been sexually harassed, if they've been called derogatory terms, or if their coursework is simply too much, they start to cave in a little. Because again, as, as high schoolers, we are often expected to act as adults. When in reality, we're still trying to develop what exactly that means. And I hope that that doesn't mean that we are voiceless and I hope that doesn't mean that we are complacent. So this is basically me playing with you. But children are in danger. And I know none of you would like to see them dead. So thank you.
Since like you guys had mentioned beginning in this, you, you've had conversations about a student advisory board and, and the needs of it and the big whys and the hows and the whats and the who's. My question is really like, why hasn't there been a student advisory council board yet? If we've had this conversation for so many years and, and, you know, coming off of, you know, after tomorrow, after even today, reflecting on this conversation and reflecting our kind of workshop here is moving forward of what can we really do to start this up and get it going? Sorry. Yeah. So that's my question for you guys is what's next? Who's next? You know, what can we do from a student's end? And, you know, what are you guys doing from your end? And how can this, how, how's the document guided you guys throughout this? And, and really, how can we really push for this more?
I think that, um, we're committed to do it and the, the model that we're toying with is very similar to what you provided to us as well. So we feel like there's a
Actually backed me up on some things that I had gotten beat up. So thank you.
So, yeah, so some of the things that we've been doing that's kind of, kind of gotten us into the, the conversation level with students. Cause one of the things that we struggle with is what is the best way to communicate with anybody? But students in particular. And so one second, Hunt, that, no, you're fine. So one of the things that we took up, gosh, I don't know how many years ago now, three years. Where we have what we call breakfast with the board. We go into a high school. Two board members go and we meet with students. And they're very diverse group of kids. And we just talk and we just listen to what they have to say and, and we usually come in, kind of come in with some guiding questions, but we, it's been very interesting how open the students can be when we're in there and we, and we learned a lot and applied what we learned. But how, but we still felt like we need something a little more structured and more public. Because a lot of times, nobody knows except the kids that were there, who, that we were there talking and that, you know, that's part of what we do. And so I think the question that I have back is how, what is the best way to communicate with students? And I know there's probably for us to hear, you know, hear from you and for you to be able to reach out to us and have this two-way conversation. We do get letters from students every now and again, which we love. In fact, we just got some recently that were interesting.
But ultimately it is to be able to reach the students, to get them interested in applying for this when struggle with, you know, getting some to the breakfast with the boards. And sometimes it is the ASB students are right. We don't want the ASB students, that president, vice president, all of, they already have way too much on their plate. And we want this to be more diverse in that that it's open up to more people that just don't, aren't able to stand up in front of their classmates and run for an office. So that's always kind of been our thought too, is that we don't want just the ASB students on this group.
Oh, I wanted to, because I, I, I kind of stopped him real quick. But no, you're fine. You are totally fine. But I want to hear what you have on your mind. But no, you're fine. You are totally fine. But I want to hear what you have on your mind.
Would you suggest that we. Fear, you know, other students need. And that are driving the force, I guess, within the schools. Student all. Um, because we're not, we're not in the halls, obviously. And so we read, then go back to the administrators, the principals. So it's, would you suggest we get our, uh, one person, maybe the ASB officer?
Been pretty successful when we bring food.
Yeah. That was lunch. That is terrible food though.
Yeah, based on what you said, um, I think it, it is really hard to get that student. I, I mean, for me, I think. Do, you know, just a lot of organizing for general, um, the big. You know, I think it's important to have. Like, I don't want to say your question, but it's important to have some sort of. We could be food. Change and then it can be, we, we have, I think, we show away from the conversation. We're just careful with all the application that we have, we're just. So the, uh, you know, it's, it's far more than just. But I think it's really showing that.
I have some. There's so many things rolling through my mind. I, I'm interrupting people because I'm just like. Um, so we already have some potential applications put together. Um. I mean, like we've gone through certain steps, kind of shadowing other districts and things like that. So I'm really excited to have like a student here. Like I wanted to run all this stuff by you guys and see what you think. Um. I, would you be willing to work with me and Rachel to kind of mold this into? Something to move forward in the near. Whether that be just, you know, reviewing the application for us, telling us if you think we missed something. Um, or if something shouldn't be there. I know in your proposal, you said you're not going off of the GPA, however it would. We're not looking for honor roll students, but we will. My thought process is that if they will still be, uh, held to the same standards as. Other athletes and other, um, clubs and things like that. They would still have to be, you know, performing, um, to their, to the expectations. Which would be a requirement. So in, in a way, we do kind of need to see what their, their GPAs or their grades are, but not holding that as, you know, like it's got to be up at a certain point. That isn't a deciding factor. It's more of a. Making sure that they're, they're going to be able to sit on that committee and other things like that. I do like your idea of the one to two students from each high school. I would prefer two. Um, and that be a junior and a senior. Um, because when you have the senior graduate, then we don't, that brings your junior up. And then the training for just the junior that's coming in. Um, and just kind of, you know, making it simple. And my question with Henrietta Lacks and Legacy is that. From those high schools. Is that it would be sufficient to have just one rep from each of the other, from Henrietta Lacks and Legacy?
I mean.
Correct.
I'd like to have this up and rolling for this next coming school year. In the, in the process, we've got. Um, things that we want to hear about, um, that we've got a team. Oh, I know that first year will, will be the most challenging, just trying to figure out kind of how everybody wants to operate and all of that, but. On a, you know, we kind of were on that track and then with COVID hit, it kind of shut us down because we're dealing with. Other things at the time, but we really would like to see that back up and running because we feel like the timing is really good. Um, because of the social emotional needs of our students, um, after everything they've been through. I mean. We've got adults in trauma. We've got kids in trauma. We have the community in trauma and. Want. Kind of stabilize. And give our students a way to feel connected and to feel heard. Um, through all of this, because they have, I agree, they have, you guys all have a lot to say. And, um. So that's kind of our. From a timeline standpoint, um, I don't know what the timeline would be as far as when the applications go out. But that's, that's something we'll work on, but we just want to make sure we have the framework and. Forward for that deadline.
Part of the, you know, the equity and making sure that we're represented, um, that will definitely be something that we will take a look at and. Have it kind of, you know, across, we don't want the group, obviously, just people. Right students or. Voices from all areas. Um, so working more with Mrs. Hightower in order to make sure that happens, but we also want to be, you know, respectful of the fact that we do have students. On our diversity team that we don't want to. Um, you know. Feel like we're taking the place of either, because we do have our student representatives there as well. So this just, we need to make sure that they're all, we're collaborating with all of the groups, especially where we have our student reps involved. And, and just making sure that we're all working together and not, you know, kind of. Up on our own little tangents. But those are all things and the, the diversity team is still fairly new. And so in, I actually was part of the, um, the. Reading the applications and the way that Clarissa. All right, Mrs. Hightower, now that we have students in the room. Um, the way that Clarissa did the scoring and how we ended up coming up with our selected group. And I would like to, you know, work with her in mirroring that, um, because I think that it came, it was very fair. Um. That were made and how they were made.
Um, so yeah, I mean, everything that.
Well, and I just, just as a quick side note though too, and, and it's not for any other reason, just to. Um, perspective on it, um. I am a parent of biracial children. And, or yeah. Um, so we're. Maybe looking at a bunch of. Oh, but there's, there's a lot more to that too. So when. I'm, I, I just don't want you guys to think that this isn't coming, um, from all directions. Like we are looking at this through all lenses. I have a freshman at Evergreen who. Biracial and so I, I'm, I'm. Going down those paths. Um, and, and I can, I, I understand and I can empathize with. A lot of that. So please know that. We are very much, um, pushing our equity. Initiative. Forward. Um, and this is, there isn't going to be. And, um. At all. Uh, this will be boots on the ground, everybody, because. That's the reason for this group. And we need to make sure that we're hearing from everybody and we're hearing all sides and that we are using. Not use, I don't like the word use, but that our students, us are collaborating and making it. We're not, then we're doing it wrong. And it's time to reevaluate and to edit over because. I don't want to waste your time. And we really want this to be successful. And I think that's probably why it's taken us. So long because we want to make sure that we are covering everything and we are doing. And in the way it should be done, we are the sixth largest school district in the state of Washington. So we can't mirror other school districts. Even battleground where they only have two reps, because they only have one high school or two high schools. So this is, this is new territory for us.
I mean.
That's right. We might just have to do that.
Well, I will, um, we'll make sure to get your contact information and schedule something, um, and then talk, and actually Rachel, who is not here, is a prosecuting attorney for the city of. Our county. So, um, she's actually, she's got a new title.
She's deputy prosecutor.
Yeah, oh, deputy prosecutor. So yeah, so there, I mean, she also brings in her own. Vision of a lot of things and a lot of other things that I wouldn't have ever thought about. So I will, you know, try to get. Something together, even if it is Zoom. I know you guys are probably just tired of Zooming, but, um. Your school schedules and everything else. So we'll, we'll try to get something put together so that we can maybe. Spend some time to hash out what we do have and what your guys' ideas are.
Well, I think, um. It is a bigger conversation. So I think what we should plan for, we can talk about this tomorrow night. Is, um, some, a workshop that's kind of is devoted just to this, because it's a huge conversation and. A lot of moving parts and pieces that we've got to get. Figured out with the students. And so. Um, that's something we can work on, um, together to get. Voices again, and some other voices. That. Cause we got to know, you know, like some of the logistics things worry us so much. Like we've got. Students coming from multiple schools. Well, how are they going to, are they going to meet in person? Do they, how do they get there? Do we need to provide, have a mode of transportation for, you know? It's things like that that can get in the way of progress and it seems so simple, but it's not. You know, we know so many students are busy with, they have other activities or in sports, they've got jobs, they, you know, have family obligations. And so how do we make this? Um, as easy as we can for students to not have barriers to. Look, and that's just a whole other, you know, part of the conversation, taking it worth their while. So.
Yeah, and maybe into providing some extra credits. Yeah, you know, so you know, like half this, half a credit. Another district doesn't have a credit a semester. So.
Uh, uh, yeah, I mean, in terms of transportation, I don't know how much the, I don't know.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike. He's a pro. He can wrangle a budget like nobody's business and get us what we want.
But it won't be like a tuition at Harvard, so don't worry. But, um, yeah. And how can you, you know, interpret transportation and food and, you know?
Exactly.
And there's legalities with, you know, transporting students and all those things. So it's, there's a lot of moving parts. there's a lot of moving parts, um, in it. So yeah, those are.
We'll have them come so that things are not on a kind of a crazy long night.
Well, and one of my, um, biggest concerns early on, and we're almost done, so we'll let you guys. But when we get together, um, to meet the board, if there's more than three of us, it becomes an open public meeting and we have to release it to guests and they're welcome to show up. And anybody that wants to. So I, uh, early on, that was one of my things is that I don't want to feel any more intimidated or any more uncomfortable to begin with. Um, so we would go with one board member, maybe two at the most as a representative that kind of guides the group as well. So even a workshop, um, if we're not doing it in, like with a board meeting, we may only have maybe me and Rachel, me and Beck, me and Rob, me, you know, just whatever that looks like. Um, and not that we don't respect you and we all would love to be there. It's just, I would like to kind of best protect you guys, um, from some of the other things until it's necessary.
I mean, chances are they won't show up, but it would be just that time, you know, and.
And we want everybody to be a part of it. We want everybody to, you know, have input and to see how it's going. I just, I, I definitely want to protect the students that are, are willing to step up and to, to help kind of work through this. Now, as the council, they will have to, you know, that, but when we uh, the three of you, I feel like I would want to protect you from the, you know, potential of oh, um, nothing, but it could be something and it's just more, and I want it to be more intimate, intimate, um, kind of hash out some things and then take it. If that's that mommy and me that I just, you know, I want to protect.
Oh, yeah. We're very conscious of posing anybody to the stuff we, well, you saw tonight. Sometimes we catch it. But we don't want, I, we don't want any student to feel nervous or afraid that by speaking their minds, there's going to be backlash or anything. We want this to be a safe. It can be open and it can be courageous conversations, but it's got to be a safe place to have those conversations. Happy to turn things over to the students. I think it would be, it would be awesome.
Oh, yes. No, I mean, this has been, um, this has been high on our priority, unfortunately with COVID. And it was kind of like, how are we going to reach kids via virtual Zoom? They're already getting crap ton of emails. They don't want to hear from us. Um, so that's why it kind of stalled a little bit. So this is going, um, and you kind of just didn't, you know, invigorated us again and kind of put that fire under us that there was a student that was interested in and communicating and collaborating with us. So that was like, yay, let's go. Um, so.
I think it's one of the insights here is that throughout this, the students would have welcomed an opportunity to zoom with this. Uh, too, but, uh, and it was part of the motivation of bringing them here, uh, to say what they have to say.
You've been awfully quiet.
Been holding that microphone for a while.
I'm sorry. I was a naughty facilitator. Go ahead.
And what I wanted to say earlier is when you asked the question about why we haven't started, why we haven't started yet. Um, I just had a thought because, you know, we have been working out for several years and we started with the purpose of the board because kind of our thought was if we went out to the schools, we could hear from as many students as possible. And that's what we wanted to do. More voices, but that, which we kind of expressed that for tonight. Um, and so we, and I always felt like having a board like, um, doing like Battle of the Land does where two representatives or what we've seen at the state level, where they have two, two students that sit up there with them. And it's kind of, to me, it's like a, you know, kind of a battle point show where they just have a couple of students that sit there and represent. Well, we wanted to hear from lots of voices and that was kind of where we started with the purpose of the board until we could get something normalized and do like this. Student advising group where we get people that work from all different schools and then they work together. Because I don't think we have anything else like it where all of our high school students collaborate together from all the different buildings, which I think would be fantastic is that you, you, uh, unify people more together, we'd be, we'd be Evergreen, right? Where it's not like a, you're, you mean, or whatever, or, 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 it's Evergreen community. We're trying to benefit everybody that lives within our community. Um, so I think that was part of, you know, kind of part of the reason. The other thing for us to consider as a board is once we start getting all this information, we have to be able to act on it and do something with it. Because we want to hear and we want to hear smaller voices, but when we hear things that, like, oh, you know what, that's, I open, when we commit changes, then we have to do something with it. And so I think that's kind of like our process and make sure that we have something in place that makes sure that we can do something with it, let's forget it.
No, we just got an announcement that there's free lunches every.
Better Domino's than Leonardo's.
Yeah, yeah, we can make Domino's work, not Leonardo's.
We just got told there's free food for the next two academic years.
The other thing too is that we don't want just to be bombarded by what's wrong.
Yeah.
We want you to come up with solutions with us because we may not always think that, or we may not make the go down the path and make a solution that actually is going to work. So it's, that is also a thing, you know, this isn't going to just be a, let's just playing, you know, during council time, let's, if we've got, you know, we've got issues, now let's figure out a way to solve them. Within our parameters.
Um, I think also, um, in terms of when it comes to
Now past your bedtime.
When it comes to the solution for the person, um, it's really important to us to get something out of the but, uh, I don't even have a board with the very given student.
And sharing what we already have that you may not know that's already in place.
I think some of those trainings already exist that go through us or through the Russian student leaders. They do, yeah. So those resources will be there for students who come to this work.
Yeah, we have to bring them, bring that training here by people who are experts in working with students.
And a lot of districts bring their student advisors to the Washington Conference when it's not.
Obviously, we wouldn't be bringing 12 or whatever, but.
No, that one year that Moser brought our five of us and stood on the stage with him. Uh, so this really only the budget thing to think about. I wanted to, I wanted to really thank you guys for coming and talking with us and telling us stories. I think it says something that when um, really bad with my son, what he's done. And he talks about the progression of spending for depression in a student. It makes me think of my grade year, how universal and how resonant these feelings are and those circumstances are. As I went through that, we lived through it. Inability to express sadness. And the only piece of evidence that they had were the grades that began to fall and then a teacher called my mother. And when they intervened, it was, it was the 1980s. So it wasn't like it is today when people intervene, but it was still an expression of care and guidance and it saved our teacher, Barb McGuffin, saved. Uh, and it's, it's, uh, something like, I, I wanted to reflect that back. This is, you're, you're telling universal story, a multicultural story when you talk about that. And the fact that you talk about that is so important, part of it. It's probably the biggest part of the reason why we want your advice is because you know. Thank you so much for coming and saying that. Uh, it's, yeah, uh, we talked about intersectionality and this moment is kind of strange for us because we're used to not having an all white board. Yeah, we had, uh, um, Japanese American, Chinese, African, Irish, Stanford graduate, and successful. Uh, John Skelton, Spanish Hispanic writers. And so, yeah, the, the white skin is masking some intersectionality. Don't thin that up, right? Or you can help us, uh, express ourselves in ways that make sense to you.
You're fine.
No, I wanted you to come and say it.
We are.
Don't be sorry. It is, hey.
No, it's, it's a good thing.
They're pretty white, we're pretty white. Let me tell you. And, but that's the other thing too, when you talk about no tokenism. The reason we wouldn't want to do that, aside from what we believe as far as our equity initiative, where we're trying to go, um, in our diversity work and we're all learning and all, all kinds of amazing things that are helping us with. But just like buddy else, you can't have a token person of any power or whatever because their experience, every, like every black student is going to have the same experience of being black. I mean, it's just like with us, we all have different things going on in our lives. And so it's, we have to hear from multiple voices, not just this one of this culture, this one of that culture. It, it's not going to work if we don't hear the different experiences of different people, no matter what. And that is really important to us. And sometimes a hard conversation to articulate in a way because you were, we worry, I know I worried, I must say it the wrong way, but know that want to hear those voices. And there's lots, there's lots of them out there and I know earn a lot and we're going to grow a lot as a, as a district. Um, I'm proud of the fact that this is a direction that we're going. I'm really excited about it. And just so you know, young lady, it took me 10 years to get Hila and Riad Alax built. I was on the board in the beginning and we pushed and pushed and pushed until it finally comes. So I'm so happy that you love it there. That was a dream to see that happen and it took a long time.
Absolutely can. Actually, no, not next year. There isn't. We've got one going, that's going up in May this year.
There was a Vancouver senior who turned 18, graduated.
Yeah.
If you're in, i- if you're in, uh, if you're in Wellesley, it might be kind of tough though. You'd, yeah, well, you might be in Wellsley. You, I mean, you could have chosen WSU, but again, I can't make you make that choice.
Thank you guys so very much for your time.
So, um, I'd like us to move into equity update.
And we've got Julie and Clarissa in the back. I'm going to let you two sort out who's going first. I don't know. No, I just was wanting to look at something other than the back of Julie's head. I think it was wrong. He's saying it's not on the microphone. I have a question for you. So if the marketing materials go out in May, is there a finite number of spots available for kids? Or are we, I mean, part of it is how many staff do we have signed that are signing up to teach? But do we anticipate a number limit at all? And of course, this is all free for kids in K eight, and then we've made it free for the high school kids as well. So And when do we think that the marketing materials will be available for parents then? Early May. And it's the first two weeks. I'm sorry. I see you're ready to talk, but I'm just going to keep interrupting you off.
I wondered if transportation was part of the picture. Can they be bused to the schools for those two weeks?
But we have, there was a set aside within the S R two for this type of a program. And so definitely will provide the transportation as well.
No. And then I think you used a term that interests me. You said learning completion rather than learning recovery or learning loss. That's a reflection of the fact that this is not a deficit model. Unfinished, okay. I'm Yes. Good term. No, it's, it's, there's a, there's a lot of legislative conversation about learning loss and learning recover as though it were the student's fault that they're behind during a global pandemic, blah, 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 that kind of thing. And I appreciate having a term I can use. Because there are a lot of parents who talk to me and say, of course, they've been learning a lot. I feel the same way. It's like, there isn't, there hasn't been any learning loss. It's just been learning different. And if we recognize the different learning, kids, kids don't not learn. That's it's just characteristic. So thank you for keeping the focus on that.
Clear and the update. For very important audit, which was one of your very first, you know, and so this was very, very important in the work that we're doing. The verbal updates, but to be able to visually go back and say, oh, I don't remember, you know, where we're on this and to be able to see. I appreciate it.
I appreciate everybody who's, you know, getting, moving that ball forward. Because I know the work's not easy out of job descriptions you guys had to work with. Thank you for that. All right. Have a legislative update. Have a short one.
Sorry, I was over everything.
Bob telling you, it'll be a short one.
That turned from a question to a statement.
Don't have an option.
I'll start with the session will be over Sunday. It's actually the E S D Vancouver and Evergreen trying to work with a guy that works in a system that's been, he's actually worked with WEA, he's worked with school districts, worked with a lot of places. You don't have to give me all the credit, but we are helping kind of put together what we believe is a potential transportation formula that might fix some of the problems that have occurred over the years. And it's, it's a tricky thing. But there's a lot of knowledge, I think, within this group. And Monica has been willing to support that by bringing a bill forward. We've talked with Supergana Reichdahl, so he's aware of it. So there are people that support it. And Melissa reached out to Rob. If you get your wish.
You get your wish.
Victoria.
Right. We'll get that on the agenda. So okay, that sounds good. Okay, good. Well, we have an executive session. And I think we need a little break. I know I need a little break.
Thanks everyone for sticking it out.